We call immediately, the first item on the agenda is to approve minutes of June fifth and June eleventh.
So.
Is that headed? Yeah. Any amendments, changes to the minutes? Now, hearing all those favor adoption, they are saying aye. Those opposed, votes unanimous. Then we'll want to item. Uh, let's see, we're gonna talk about item seven first, with objection, sorry, about the golf tournament. You guys go back to work.
Thank you.
Yeah, who's talking?
I can just let you know. Want to stand up?
No, no, I think we can hear it. I can hear it here.
We are looking at potentially raising, having raised seventeen thousand dollars. I'm still waiting on the invoice from Coachico. But that is what it's looking like. We had twenty sponsors and eighteen Raffle sponsors for the event, thirteen. It's really good turnout. Everyone was very happy. Um, and we can stop waiting wishes for our residents.
Yeah. Right?
Excellent. Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good line of mind.
Yeah, um, I think it's about the same as last year, give or take, so very happy about that. I was hoping to raise twenty for our twentieth, but I'm happy with this. We'll take it, right?
That's right.
And a special thank you to Susan Rice for the last minute stuff. We really appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. Actually.
We actually have pictures and we took pictures of how we laid it out and stuff. That was very nice of you.
Well. We don't have family, okay, so to speak, and we like to give, um, that's just something that is part of us. And I was joking around with Janet and I said, well, you never know. I said, someday we both might end up. I said over at the nursing home, so we're just kinda greasing the skids there that maybe they'll take care of us.
Well, thank you.
But we, we enjoyed it and it's, it's fun to be able to do something for, for people who might not be as fortunate as others. It was fun.
So here's the, the golf committee boss.
Yeah.
Might everybody introduce themselves?
I'm Melissa Martop. Maria Air, Karen Mallon.
You boy.
So they, it's really almost an all year. They meet at like once a month and then more frequently as it comes, uh, you know, time to the actual event.
Next time we put tickets on the chairs, you know.
Yeah, I got, I got a do not remove tag.
Not get arrested.
Yeah, that was good.
I've seen them all.
Thank you, guys. They did a great job. As you know, every penny goes to the residents.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys did a great job.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was fun.
Next time we get the weather to cooperate looking.
Oh, yes. It's like today would be gorgeous.
Yeah, when you know it.
Actually, the paint comes off.
I know. Yeah, we, we were fortunate, unfortunate. Thank you, boss, so they go back to work.
Yeah, why don't we do the same for Justin and Sheriff? Justin, why don't we talk about item three? Oh, Commissioner, we can have somebody join if they want to identify themselves. We only see a phone number.
Okay. Will someone join us by phone on Zoom? Hello? Hmm, they're there. Now they're not.
There you go. Oh, wow. Yeah. Alrighty. So Justin, let's talk about the radio dispatch.
Commissioner was asking about how we were making out with the distribution of the, couldn't know what was going on.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where we're at right now, uh, the software portions of it that needed to happen first is completed. That was a big part of the purchase was upgrading the, uh, remaining equipment here for the infrastructure. Uh, next piece is getting the radio units out to the towns. Uh, we did meet with the chiefs. Uh, needs have changed a little bit since twenty twenty when we started this whole grant process. So we're just trying to shuffle some stuff around. Uh, some agencies didn't change at all, the ones we, we knew when they're, they're pretty small agencies, they did not change. Um, that's where we're at with that. Um, one piece of input I do need from, uh, the administrator and the commissioners is, uh, the question has come up is who's gonna be responsible for this equipment once we turn it over to the towns? Please somebody work through that and figure out how you guys want that to work.
Well, perhaps, you know, you can fill me in on some more details and we'll bring it back to the commissioners at a future meeting.
So that's the last piece of that and we'll be ready to rock with the remainder of them.
How long you think it's gonna take before everybody, I mean, they all had a wish list. I know they had portable, they wanted.
There was a huge, the wish list was this big, we were able to get this much down, uh, sort of make it fit.
Yeah.
There's many people as we can, there's many agencies as we can. We can't give everybody everything they wanted, but everybody will get something out of it.
And, and we're comfortable at paying the bill. I mean, we did receive the money from the feds. I just wanna make sure that you're satisfied with the equipment that we've received so that we can pay the bill.
With Kelly's help, we were able to inventory everything. Everything is here as we ordered. So we're, we're good with paying that and, uh, that'll allow the installations to happen.
Next week. Yeah, we, we wanted to just, you know, even though we had the money, we wanted to make sure that we're gonna, you know, that we were good.
You're expecting one more smaller invoice, correct?
That'll be for the installations.
Okay.
Yeah, and that'll be the remainder of the grand amount.
Okay. So what do you think of, what do you think? When do you think, it's okay, when do you think of, uh, you'll be done with dealing with the?
Realistically, the end of July.
Well, yeah, well, that's not too bad.
Yeah, the installations are gonna take the longest and that's like corralling the installer and getting around everywhere.
But you can.
That's being done by a third party, so we're doing, giving the equipment and the installer.
We, we can do that. We can get rid of those things like the portables and stuff.
Portable, we can.
They don't have to wait for.
No, we can set those up and drop them off. That's, that's very simple.
Okay. All right, you got any questions on that? Joe and Paul? Okay. Yeah, let's talk about this dot gov conversation. This thing's been going on for, I mean, I, I can't wait till we switch over, but.
This is Justin's baby as well.
With many other things. Uh, so as you know, we spoke about it last fall, uh, and the commissioners signed the authorization for us to get the dot gov. Uh, with the sheriff on board, we're able to connect the final piece of getting the sheriff's office portion of the dot gov authorized. Uh, we are ready to go with a scheduled date of June twenty fourth.
Let's hold up.
For our cover.
Yeah, so all our email addresses, everything is changing, right?
So the.
You know, for the sheriff.
Uh, for the sheriff's office.
We're a little behind.
Yeah, we run the two separate, uh, networks.
Right.
So ours is gonna go before the main county network does. Uh, we've been working with Paul.
Yeah.
The whole way to try to be as close as we can with the timing, but, uh, he has a lot more users. It's gonna take him a little bit more time to be ready.
Can I ask a question? Um, the transition where, I mean, I'm sure you have the same issue that I have is that we use our current email address as a username for a lot of portals and a lot of access to items. How does that all transition without having to go to every entity and changing that?
Sure. So the, uh, I'm not sure exactly how Paul's gonna set it up, but I'm assuming it will be similar to ours, it's the same type of environment. Uh, we're gonna keep the old email addresses live for a period of time, so you still have them to be able to log into whatever, um, services you need to. At some point, you are gonna have to change them and that's gonna be the pain in the butt for everybody, uh, if you want, because they're gonna have to go to every service.
Yeah, you're gonna need to find people, yeah.
Well, yeah, you know, what I was hoping is that we would create a message that is attached to every one of the, you know, dot Stratford dot N H dot U S as we send them out saying, you know, as of this date, we, you know, are gonna go to dot gov and, and if we put it out a couple of months, um, hopefully we've reached our vendors, you know, in, in that, or, or whatever time period you all think is appropriate, you know, we'll put it out that far and we'll just make sure we highlight that we're going to dot gov and hopefully we've picked up, you know, everybody we've needed to pick up over that time period is the discussions I've had with Paul.
Yeah, it's a very similar way. We're gonna, uh, do the transition. We've been working with him. Uh, another thing it can do is if an email comes into your older, your C O dot Stratford address and you reply to it, it's gonna come from your dot gov. So the reply you send is gonna have your new address and that can be a, hopefully a.
And it puts the one or two other person.
Yeah, and hopefully that's the, the big thing they notice is, oh, this is different.
I, I think, I think, you know, you'll find that the other counties, while they're behind us, um, I, I think we're the first county that's gonna go to dot gov. Um, you, you know, I'm, I'm sure the pressures are gonna come from the climax, um, you know, to go to dot gov, cause it's just so much safer.
Right.
You know, and, and, um, so I, I think it's, it's gonna happen. You know, that, that it, it's gonna take a while and there'll be some adjustment. But if we leave it for two or three months, uh, is what Paul and I were talking about. We hadn't come up with a definitive date yet. We were gonna check with Diane and a couple of other, um, you know, main users to, to make determination as to how long to keep the dual.
Yeah.
Some of them, I think a lot of them are, are pretty straightforward. Some of them get a little tricky when you're dealing with the IRS and US Treasury. And I don't know about yours, that took six months to get, if you have to make a change to that one, to that FBI leap.
Maybe I'll start my angry now.
Yeah. Some of them, it's just this.
Here back by two thousand thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our Sam dot gov, which you guys are all tied into as well, you know, it is, some of them are, you know, you, you have to send your driver's license, you know.
So scared.
Yeah, we've all, we've done that. Yeah, you're adjusting grossing.
Timeline wise, um, to, to be fair, this probably, he could have had this done a while ago. Um, I slowed him down a little bit just because of all the questions and concerns that I had. So I think we would have been the first county, but actually Bellknap has, has done it and a few other places. So I've been monitoring and talking to how it, how it's gone. Um, so we should have some resources in, in the state and other counties that can tell us how it's gone, cause it definitely, um, the research and the answers that I've gotten, both from the, um, Overwatch that we're working with and from Justin, like, it sounds like it's, I'm, I'm happy not to be first, because it's, um, it's really been, uh, looks like the way has been paved and we can get all our questions answered and talk to these other counties about how bad it is and how long they're keeping things online. And so, um, it's, yeah, it's good. I feel, I feel good about it, um, which, you know.
So it's the sheriff's departments that went to doc gov, right? At the other counties?
I've seen the Bellknap County doc gov.
Have you? Because I haven't seen it.
Oh, really?
I haven't seen it with their nursing.
It may just be the, the sheriff's office that started.
Yeah, cause I haven't seen it with the nursing home. Um, and, you know, we, we communicate as a group. Uh, and we meet as a group and there's never been any mention of it and there's not any change, so maybe they're just doing it in pieces.
A lot of the large municipalities did it that way too. They did it section by department. They're gonna feel it out as.
Yeah. Yeah, this will be good prepping, having it in your hands.
Yeah.
Uh, the only, uh, heads up I wanted to give you guys, there'll be, uh, about eleven hundred dollars coming into the counting as reimbursement through the Overwatch Foundation. It's the, the grant for doc gov. And that's gonna cover our cost to actually make the switch. Uh, so we'll need the authorization of the commissioners to, to accept those funds when they do come in.
Yeah.
We'll just bring it as miscellaneous revenue.
Right. Yeah, makes sense.
That is to, um, reimburse for the block five to help. And then it's also some, um, money allocated for new, um, like business cards or other advertising. Um, so it's nice.
They call it marketing.
Marketing, right.
I have business cards that's so old, I don't have any email addresses.
It's like your political signs.
It's like the political sign, all your dog-eared signs. Forever weather beating. Okay, so.
So I get, I get a question. Who handles the server? Or where, where, where's our server for counting?
Yeah, two.
So we have two systems. Uh, the sheriff's office is maintained out of the sheriff's office and that's a hybrid system. It's half cloud, half on premise. And then, uh, Paul manages the rest of the services and that's, uh, his server system that's across the street.
Oh, you got your own server?
We do.
Okay.
And the balance of the services are located in what used to be, used to be the only sheriff's department.
Well, we do work closely with Paul and the model projects to make sure we're both doing the, the same thing countywide, in the unified approach.
All right, well, it's, you know, the feds have been talking about doing this forever, so.
Well, we've been pushing them. Uh, they, according to Paul, you know, whenever he's checked in with me about it is that they've wanted to select smaller entities than us.
Right, I remember that in the beginning.
And, and, you know, that's what's delayed our moving to doc gov. Um, not, not that we seem to be, I was gonna say, not that we're any, you know, any large agency, but apparently we're larger than the agencies that, um, you know, that, that they.
A little one of the crashes, if anyone crashes.
Well, I think the other part of it is too, they feel the smaller agencies, you know, and well, you know, would need the help.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Now, in the, I, I.
Yeah, sure.
Um, in the transition, now, but you're gonna keep both, both systems for a while?
Yes. So the old email address will still be there.
Right, right, so.
So there won't be any loss.
And then once you find it's working, then you, it'll be all set.
Yeah, we can actually watch the traffic. So if we get to a point where we're not seeing a whole lot on the old email, we can.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe some of the junk emails.
Yeah, really.
That, that is a bonus of doing this, like, some of the, some of the junk things.
Don't hold it back.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so. You guys have any more on that? Doc gov.
So we are gonna pay the dispatch, build the Motorola boss, everything but the, uh, uh, the last part that we're waiting on the insulate, on the installation. We'd gotten all the money from the feds.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's an in and out. And that was money that was approved by the delegation last year.
Yep. Alrighty, sounds good. Item five, let's talk about the Special Olympics, which is already going by, right?
Yes, I was gonna tell you how great it was. Uh, so the New Hampshire law enforcement and New Hampshire Special Olympics have had a wonderful relationship for many, many years and, um, your, some of your staff and some of my staff and the, um, probation and parole, we took part in the, uh, torch run on, on Friday. We took the torch, um, at the Irving on one fifty-five from Dover. They had a good group and then we ran it into UNH. And then, um, we all ran with an athlete bringing the torch into the, the stadium over there. And it was, it was wonderful as usual. And then a lot of things got rained out. We were supposed to be taking part in the cruiser parade on Friday night, which we were gonna have a, um, county vehicle there along with everybody else across the state, but it was canceled due to the, the awful weather that was Friday night. Um, so it was nice. We got at least part of it in and they were able to do, um, some of the activities, most of the activities, I think, for, for the athletes. But it was, it was a good, good time, good and great county representation, so.
Besides the public representation, the, um, you know, the community work.
Work, yeah.
Um, had a hundred and thirty-one hours of, uh, staff and participants, uh, in the setup in four different locations. Uh, they created and tied the ribbons. Uh, they prepped the loading equipment, uh, storage out of Manchester. They, uh, picked up and dropped off approximately a hundred tables and nine hundred chairs from Kittery. They, uh, transportation setup of, uh, the Bachi courts as, as an, at an alternative location in Summersworth and Durham. Um, transportation of equipment from storage, setup and placement of equipment around the UNH campus, all the bottled water distribution, all the trash removal and site cleanup after the games.
Wow.
So that was done by community, our community work and, uh, I call them forced volunteers, but.
So, uh, just an, an interesting anecdote to that. I was at Chili's, um, Friday night, I believe, and I saw, um, I saw a couple of athletes that were there and a gentleman walked by and it said, coach. I said, hey, are you here for, uh, for the games? And he said, yeah, we just went to, we, we just, uh, got a gold and a silver in Bachi. And I said, oh, no kidding? And he said, yeah, they had to move it because of the rain. Uh, and it was at this place in Summersworth. He's talking about the dome.
Oh, correct.
And he's like, and I don't know how they did it, but they got us all moved over there and they got us all moved back and it was just perfect. And I didn't, I, I didn't realize that, like, we were part of that transportation setup.
Troy, Troy Matthew and three or four or five forced volunteers.
Yeah, that's, so it's just interesting to hear that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it, it was appreciated, obviously. That's great.
Yep.
Yeah, so they're the kind of behind the scenes guys to, you know, to.
I don't know, it was a good setup. Yeah. Was it well turned, was, was there a good turnout?
It looked like the weather was hampered it. Yeah. It's just.
Weather's been hampering a lot of things.
Yes, exactly.
Fifty in a row.
Yeah. Unbelievable. Alrighty, well, thanks for letting us know what took place in the time. I already thank you to the Community Corrections for all their work.
Yeah, you know, as you know, that's our, that's Community Corrections to an adoptive charity.
Right.
Summer and winter. So I don't usually authorize Community Corrections to travel outside of the county. Uh, however, it, they had to go outside of the county to set up inside the county.
Right.
So I authorized them to go, you know, to Kittery and other places to pick up Manchester, which is where, um, Special Olympics has their storage facility.
Well. Okay. You guys have any questions on that? No?
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you. Alrighty. Well, Sheriff, I think we're all set with you. I don't see anything else on the fence, right?
Sounds good.
We're gonna be talking. Okay. Alrighty. We didn't get that. All right, we gotta deal with this, uh, farming bid.
I, I don't, I don't have. Okay, maybe we can sign the notes and.
Yeah, we'll do the notes next. We'll authorize or sign the note.
Thanks. Diane's got them all marked out for you.
The one on the top door, which this is Camden Bank is, you know, they've merged, so it's a little different. So this is a form. Just, you have to consider, I guess, the owner and, um.
Oh, yeah, I'm the owner.
Well, so that's good, cause if we default on the seven to nine.
We expect, yeah, you can kick it in.
Uh, three point nine nine two.
And here there's certain ones that have to be signed by.
Yeah. Three point nine nine two. We had a second bid, um, there was an explanation about the fact that it's.
There's a two, so, so.
Sound like small amount, right?
There's three.
There's this, a small amount of.
Well, we gotta make sure we sign.
So we didn't get, we only got a couple of big.
And Janet.
Yeah, no one was.
Deputy treasurer.
Quite, quite far away.
Pan doors, anybody?
I think, um, Janet's been in contact with her.
Something, so.
More than anybody else.
Way over there. Wasn't even close. I know that, um, I, I did hear from someone that, uh, there is some future interest, uh, from TD Bank now that they've bought the peoples. Uh, so we're gonna, uh, we're gonna ask our financial advisor to make sure we engage them directly.
I usually miss.
Even though we send them, you know, it goes out to everybody, but, but, uh, I think TD wants to show a presence in the community.
Doing a sign, five thousand.
It, it might help.
And checks, yeah.
And it might, yeah, I'm sorry, so that TD is M and T, M and T. Who wants to, oh, who wants to show a presence in the community, so they might give us a good bid next time.
It's a long ways.
Um, yeah, I, uh, but.
This is what we're.
They did express an interest, so. Yeah, well, if somebody wants to give me a good deal, I don't care, uh, you know, cause they're just knowing us money, that's all they're doing. It's a, it's a one-time transaction and then a one-time payoff. So we just wanna, uh, make sure that, um, we, we double check to reach out to M and T's Treasury Department. Why I said TD is M and T.
One of those.
One of those two initial banks, you know. Mister Chairman, uh, are we still online? Uh, I know that you had authored, uh, for us to be doing the printing for the fiftieth anniversary for the.
Right.
Association of Counties, so we still online for that?
I haven't heard, I haven't talked to them for about a month, so I don't know where, where they're sitting. I, I think they are.
Okay. Well, I mean, it, it does make a difference in, in terms of awarding the next bid, you know, we can offset, uh, to that.
Right.
Uh, bid with. I, I will, I'll inquire before we actually place the order. If you guys just wanna authorize it, I'll reach out to, uh, I'll, I'll chat to Kate and Danielle and find out if we're still online to do that printing.
Yeah, I'd offer to film a book. Machine broke.
Glenn?
Yeah, Glenn. Hey. It's the, are you ready?
Yes, my apologies. My computer decided to take time to do an update. Um, I usually blink this out the night before and just didn't. Um, so the main, so the, we have two very different.
D T G cost, the pressure is a time, the one and the whole side of that.
So I was looking at cost breakdown, because the one, the, the biggest concern that I have with the, with the less expensive machine, um, is the fact that it runs on ink cartridges rather than.
Right.
Bulk ink tanks.
Yeah, and they have to keep buying them.
If, um, if I, I got the cost per garment for the ink, uh, substantially different between the bulk and the other, in order to get really an even breakdown, it goes out to eight years and that's with just a fifteen percent increase in printing, not per year, but just overall. Um, which I think we can easily get, because Barcia isn't even advertising the screen printing right now, because our system right now is so cumbersome. It's still a lot of money, though. Um, the ink cartridge system is less expensive over time. The other one.
You mean the tank system?
The tank system over time.
Right.
Will, at eight years, will, will equal out.
Yeah.
Until we get to that point.
Is, is it a better system?
It is, because it's a, it's a more, it's a more rugged system and again, it goes on bulk ink versus the cartridges, but it's a considerable price difference and the initial cash outlay is pretty considerable.
Okay.
Um, you know, the garment printing is basically half the price, ninety cents versus one a buck forty or something, a buck twelve.
I see.
Or two or four, yeah. So there is a cash outlay. He would just have to really, in order to make it worthwhile, he'd have to really kind of pound it out.
But we also have, you know, and there's also been discussion about us doing the, uh, you know, for reimbursement of the Association of Counties fiftieth.
Which we can do with that, with this system we can do versus the, the five screen printing. We can't do it with that.
No.
There's just too much waste with that system. One, one smear and we have to root off the whole garment.
It, it, yeah, it's available.
Well, from my perspective, I always, I don't like to do things on cheap, because it always come back and, and fight them. It always does, so.
Yes.
Um, this does. You two years, I know with three years, I don't know what you got.
I, I don't disagree with you. That's why I tried to do the math to see where the break even point kind of was and eight years seems to be. Like I said, the more he increases production, um, so the cheaper it should get.
Right.
Because you're talking about two dollars a gar, two dollars a garment versus ninety cents a garment printer.
Right, right. Well, I, I don't know how you gentlemen feel about it. I have a problem going with a, with a better machine.
It's just, we're not in competition, cause it's the same company.
Right, it's the same.
It's just two different machines.
Right.
So it's, it's not like we're, we're bypassing the, the cheaper one, going for the more expensive one. We're simply going for a better printer that's more economical to operate.
I also think that we could do. I ju- I just think that we could do. We we would have a more attractive product. That would help us, you know, marketing with people that want us to be.
And plus, we print a lot of shirts internally, you know, that that saves us some money from going out and buying them. You know, for people that add, uh, you know, that, cuz we allow.
Well, stitching machine, is that, is that, is that in this, or was that?
The embroidery machine is something separate. I asked Garcia what he wanted to go for first, and he said this would be the most useful because of the waste with uh with the other system and how cumbersome it is.
How do you, do you accept like outside?
Yes, but we haven't advertised it yet because of the system we have.
And we wanna be a little careful too.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, not to compete. With the private sector, but on the other hand, we do so much internal printing, you know, for like. You know, the employees at at Riverside, if they choose to purchase a shirt.
Softball teams, like I've had softball teams, I've had.
You know, people that don't have any money, you know, like the softball teams.
Can't, uh, can't sit wanna get a shirt.
And with a system like this, there really isn't a setup, we don't, we don't do a setup fee, because it's simple and we can print one-offs.
Right.
So we we don't, you know, we don't wanna compete with the private sector, on the other hand, we think there's enough of the sector. That we're actually doing the private sector a favor by not forcing them. To to, you know, uh, do it at less than cost or, you know, so we actually think we're doing them a favor. Uh, by by, and we're careful about that, it's the same thing with the wood. Well, you know, with the wood we sell, because uh we don't wanna. Take that away from, so like, the wood will mostly sold to county employees and. Don't make a lot of money anyway.
Okay, right, um. This is kind of off off topic a little bit, but uh this is part of jail industries, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Now, what is typical, what's the amount that these inmates make while they're?
So, so it depends on the job that they are doing, there are some jobs that we have to go with prevailing wages on. For things like Stonewall Kitchen and our soldering jobs, every year they have to go and find out what the prevailing wage is for those job categories. We have to pay the inmates the equivalent of that, because we're not allowed to steal jobs from the private sector.
Right, so.
So, and then our in-house jobs, we pay. Between a buck fifty and three dollars an hour for getting one of them.
Minimum wage, I had that, uh, no, I was behind a general woman, linen truck, the other, uh, matter of fact, yesterday, I was wondering about that, if. If you had to pay minimum wage, no, not not for our own lawn, we pay a dollar fifty for folding and three dollars for. Um, general washing, and if you've ever been in there, particularly during. In it or or daylight today. The washing is worth three dollars an hour, it's it's really awful, uh. The folding's not so bad, cuz of course you're folding clean laundry, but the washing is 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 really.
Yeah, especially when they find things like teeth and used diaper, used diapers and all sorts of stuff, yeah, they find interesting stuff.
I mean, I think everybody tries to, you remember, we do la- we do laundry too from. We we do laundry for for what we're dealt with too, so it's it's. You know, we try and be careful to sort the laundry, you know, um, and sort out things that shouldn't be in there, but there's times when. It, you know, it's inhumanly impossible to say that we catch everything, cuz we don't. And and I'd be thinking if I told you again, I, best I can tell you is that we are careful to try and do the best we can. Yeah, that's a awful job.
I don't care if you're jail or not, I mean.
But a but a lot of, lot of breaking stones out back with some sleds. Lot of ladies and gentlemen, um, you know, would rather do that than than, you know. And and we weave that into their programming. So that, you know, they don't miss programs to work in industries, you know, they they still continue to get the programming that's necessary. That frequently helps them with the term of their sentence, you know, if they keep this and this and this.
Yeah, so this is, so what's the average roughly of what they, you know, when when they leave? On the system.
Anywhere from a thousand to three thousand dollars.
Well, that's a good start.
Yeah, and and uh we only let them disperse money. Uh, under. Regulated circumstances, so they can disperse some, I think, still from commissary, right? But in terms of sending money out, they can only disperse it to pay their fines. To uh. Restitution and support their family. Uh, you know, if they have a family on the outside, uh, that's all of, that's the only reason uh that. And and I notice, cuz Sandy writes the check, so that's the only reason the check goes out, is for those reasons. Right, yeah, but that then just goes back and deposited into their account.
Yeah, they're they're obligated to save a percentage of their pay.
Yeah, so what's a typical stay for uh inmates?
I mean, roughly, without. That varies uh tremendously, so we have a very robust Community Corrections program, so a lot of times. Our county uh inmates will be in for. Maybe up to seven days while they get stabilized on some type of medication, most of our long-term offenders are either sentenced to a year. Um, or um pre-trial with with a bail that they cannot achieve, or they're held on preventative detention. Of course, you know, this morning, we've got two hundred and thirty-five federal inmates, they're obviously not gonna be.
Right, right, that's.
Yeah. So uh, so generally speaking, they don't stay any more than a year, however, depending on how long it takes for a case to be adjudicated. They could be there for a long period of time.
So if you have a murder or, you know. It would be an alleged murder in that situation.
Yeah.
Um, or an, you know, an alleged serious crime, and sometimes. Um, and Chris, Chris or Gwen Corcoran, where I'm wrong. Sometimes attorneys.
You're absolutely correct.
Will drag their feet. On, i- if they know their client is going to stay in prison, they'd rather drag their feet and have them with us, because we can provide more services. Which turns around and perhaps lowers their sentence, um, like, you know.
Credit for time at least.
Well, they'll get credit for any of their time, but also we offer programs that aren't necessarily available. And when they go to plead guilty or are found guilty, and it comes to sentencing, they can say to the judge. While we were in jail, we did this A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and the judge. You know, look at, we're trying to rehabilitate ourselves, you know, we're trying to do this, and and the the judge will. Normally take that into consideration, I mean, we write countless letters that that. Uh, dictate how, wh- what what the inmate has done while they're incarcerated.
Plus, a lot of the inmates like it here, cuz they can make more money working here than they can up at the state prison, which will pay them a buck a day or something. We have had some of our federal inmates that, and some of our federal inmates have been here for three, five years, just waiting trial. We've had them work in jail industries continuously since, and they go out with tens of thousands of dollars from their savings.
But it's by far an exception.
Their butts, yeah, it is an exception. But they can really, some of them can really set themselves up for a nice start when they get out.
But the other thing is, sometimes we'll have, um. Ladies and gentlemen, who maybe they're hidden here.
Yeah, right, right.
Um, because they're key witnesses and other.
Providing our substantial assistance, they're called five K one, where they provide substantial assistance.
And and so they're hidden here, because nobody would, I mean, they could be from anywhere, and nobody would think to look for them in New Hampshire. So, you know, they're. Might not even be the right name. But they're. So those are the people that tend to stay longer.
Well, we had a, we had a funny one years ago. I won't say it's a public session, but it was funny, he would, they were trying to book him under an alias, he's like, that's. My name is, and refused to be. Held under an alias.
But, you know, you have to be really careful, because we ob- obviously wanna protect their safety.
Yeah.
And obviously, some law enforcement entity believes that that the situation that they're in. Warrants it.
Yeah.
And they pass. All of the above.
Alright, so guys, you wanna go, what do you want to go about the machine? Be good for the better one or not? You are? Okay, alright.
Alright, thank you.
I think that makes the most sense.
It does to me, I just.
I got it.
Yeah.
I'll I'll come, I I, it's all set.
Alrighty.
And I'll still try to talk him down a little bit.
Yeah, talk him down.
Well, you can only because. If we had more than one vendor, then you really can't, it really puts you in a bad spot to talk him down, cuz then you're. Then the other one says, well, you didn't give me a chance.
I know, it's all the same, yeah, it's all the same person.
Well, it's it's hard, it's hard to do a sell-off in the mid, we're not the Channel Eleven auction, you know, we're. You you try and get him to go up.
Yeah. Let's see where I can pull it out, so I can get him before one.
Yeah.
Ready. Okay, thanks for.
Thank you.
Bye, Glenn.
I have this for you, uh, Janet. Oh, you got one.
Your list of upcoming events, we got a meeting tomorrow, uh, with the delegation subcommittee. Talk about. Were you any older new business talent? Okay, questions or comments from the public?
Sign that subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, Janet can give you a list.
You received the email that says about the meeting, at the top of it has the list of the numbers.
Well, I.
I can give you a copy, but I get the list of another reserve.
Can I just resend that email, cuz.
Oh, okay.
And I don't remember seeing that, but I might have missed it, but. I'm just curious. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Alright, well then, jail, ten abortions or non-public? We have a little more question. Second. No, Commissioner Petrie, the non-public? Yes.
Yes.